Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Sorry. Do you want to finish? We're gonna go ahead and get started.
Don't let them know I didn't get that.
Well, that's fine, and that's okay. We love you anyway. We're gonna go ahead and get the meeting called. And I would like to make it known that we have two members absent, Mr. Mike Riley and Ryan Langley. And we have asked Mr. Ken Manley to do our prayer and our pledge. So that's the story.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. And I thank you for allowing us to come together to discuss the goods for the city and what we can do moving forward. Please keep everyone safe from the coronavirus and those that are sick. Let them get over it. Guide us through this meeting in Jesus' name my prayer. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas is what? I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, at this time, we would like to hear from the public. And this is an opportunity for you to address the council, dialogue, deliberation, or discussion with council members on items that are not on the agenda. It's prohibited by law. Time for each speaker is limited to five minutes.
I have a question. And in regards to the reopening, 405 Wall Street, the street between 6th and 7th. What, when do I, I know it was on the agenda before. I know it's spoken to you before.
You have.
Yes, so what were we on that? I know that we spoke and that it was gonna be like, wait for some of this to kind of calm down and city manager.
Yes, and I had to collect some information for myself too, so I would have a knowledgeable, informed discussion with you. But I will let Brian take over.
If you'll get with me and they try to get your name and the contact number up after you said 405 Wall Street.
Wall Street.
And what I'll do is, first thing in the morning, I'll get with Mike and then, and we'll see what's going on. And we'll get this all worked out. And I'll get with the mayor, find out what the history is. And then we'll get this addressed, start looking at what's going on and what we need to do moving forward.
Thank you.
And see where we're at. And then I'll be in touch after, or I'll have us committed to get with you.
That'll be great.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And thank you for your patience. We've had a lot of turnover.
I'm seeing.
Yes, a lot. And I have not time to avoid you.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, I would like to take just a minute to introduce our newest member to the community, Mr. Chad Green, who is the newest pastor at the Methodist Church. And I just wanted everybody to meet him, see his face, so that you know him as an important person in our community. So anytime we have somebody who's a head of a church and does God's work, I thank you for that.
Thank you for the work.
City Council may discuss and consider approval of the minutes of the July 6, 2020 meeting. I just have a few little corrections in stone on the others present. It's Joyce Waterfield and Stephen Gray. And Steve Gray. We can call him Steve Gary if he wants to say it.
That's why I learned to write.
Under members present, Steve Gray and. Do I have a second?
Say it.
I call the big one. Question carries. Okay, City Council may consider discussing approval, allowing the City Park Board to use the City Park and Swim Pool for their annual barbecue cook-off on June 25th through the 26th of 2021.
Well, this is something I think we've done every year. Elaine, you might elaborate on that.
This, this year was our third. It's grown each year, leaves and bounds. So we just really wanted to nail down the date so that we can secure that.
Oh, this is for the Hotter Than Hell barbecue. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion we approve the park board, City Park Board, to use the City Park. And this one we approve and then walk June 25th, 26th, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Or you can, you can jump it later on that one, making sure you got the date. That's a good thing. One mayor reunion can throw some in.
You guys have been watched up lately. It's crazy.
Okay, City Council may consider approving a resolution authorizing the submission of the city's 2020 Texas Community Development Block Grant, planning capacity building, fund application to TDA, and designating the mayor. And city manager is authorized representatives.
I thought this was a block grant that Jake, Josh, 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 Council. Outlining this whole situation.
And we had public hearing last Monday, which I think one person showed up and we visited for a little bit and then that was it. But this allows us to go ahead and move forward with the application process for the comprehensive community plan.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion we approve this resolution for the community pool.
Second. Okay.
Say it.
All in favor? Question carries. Okay, next item, City Council may discuss and consider the request of the Chamber of Commerce, Ballenger Police Department, and Ballenger Police Association to use the community center on October 31st, 2020 for the annual Howl Fest.
We already have the community center booked for Howling and Trumpertree. I guess we just want to make sure we have approval to continue on to have it. I know some motions are at 50% now, which we should still be under that 50%. I need to get a print and figure out the square footage on the region part. We also use that area. So we're still getting our ideas put in place. We should have something set in stone September on our layout again, where we're gonna have the Trumpertree and everything. So basically, they just want to know if we still have it as a goal, so.
I guess I have a little bit of concern about this. And so many people that show up for that. I mean, that community center is packed, shoulder to shoulder constantly for hours. I'm not real sure. It's hard to predict what's gonna happen by October. But COVID, COVID, I'm not sure. It'd be a live sanctuary for that many people.
And we got all that.
But not COVID, because it's such, I mean, all the kids and everything is love. And the need to really try and provide for the kids. But same down there with the whole town going down COVID. Because there's so many of people. I mean, I'm not just up here, just on the pitch. I mean, they lined up and run that thing two, three times, pulled their shoulder.
If I'm not mistaken, in fact, couldn't they just go ahead and approve it and then put in a motion, reserve the right to have it canceled if there's an executive order comes out from the state or the county judge?
Well, even if, even if it's not, when you say it's on.
Well, but they can also, you know, they can enforce their own guidelines as far as, because I know the visiting with the chief about that is they're wanting to space everybody out. All the different, but it's, you know, taking that and spreading it out. But if it's still that prevalent and that going, they can have somebody count the number of people that are allowed in, but then also require other masks.
Well, it's not, and it's not even so much how many people's inside. It's a line running along the way there.
And like I said, it's a lot of kids. That's, that's. You still have your six foot, you can still, I mean, they're still using the six foot, so I mean.
Well.
Yeah, I know, I know it sounds like a long line, but if you, if you run them in there and run them out, they go in, there are so many go in. They count them in.
And again, that's on the inside. But what I'm saying is the ones that stand outside waiting to get in, that they're all, you run stuff together, talk in distance. I mean, they don't mean to do it, but still, it's a lot of people. We had an opportunity to pass that stuff around, wouldn't you tell you to do it?
Are they still having the Trumpertree down here, or do you know? I think that takes the place. But would it not work if you put the Trumpertree outside of the parking lot or maybe into the high school?
Yeah, that's an option.
Chamber was looking at having it in a separate location anyway.
I mean, it would kind of split your, split your grounds.
So.
Well, you just listed them as the event, but my understanding was that they were looking at having the Trumpertree in a different location, plus I heard.
When I, when I saw the floor, really, I think the only thing the Chamber's gonna do is provide a team. That's all they're gonna do.
But could you have Trumpertree maybe at the high school?
We, we.
Parking lot and then.
Another, I mean, we got ideas floating around. And then whether, of course, that's a major concern. You know, but we also thought about maybe spreading out in the inside park, outside of the community center. We want to try and keep the event close enough where you park and walk and do.
As I live in that, that five acres right there.
Yeah.
And they could be plenty of room to spread everybody out.
So again, of course, it just depends on whether.
Yeah, that would, if it, yeah, like, what was it, three years ago, they're just raining, they couldn't do anything in the park?
Yeah. So.
But I'll take the rain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll take the rain or rain.
And at the same time, we have to consider the fact that the kids are going back to school.
Right.
So it's, it's kind of.
Do you think maybe we should table it until we get further?
I mean, we got four weeks for plan. I think, you know, if we can still say as it goes, then as, as we move on and do our planning and layout and logistics and everything, then, you know, we'll come back to September and see what we can tweak, what we can't tweak. And I don't know, it's depending on the governor and the state and everything else, so.
If the mayor, council caller, will, what I recommend is go ahead and have chief meet with his group again and come back to us the first meeting in September. And then that gives them time to go ahead and formulate a plan on the task, if you will. And then come up with some other solutions to, to be able to carry this hour, look at doing something different.
Is there, is there any other areas that you've been waiting in mind, Rick, that you might even turn up with that, you might have to look at?
Not really, I mean, that's obviously the best place to have it. You know, but at the same time, I have this concern, so.
The on and outs, really, on and outs, you really can't do outside. So it's better to do it inside. Of course, we can use that bigger area, we can use the arena to do it. It's just a lot better in one part of the community center because climate control, you can turn off the lights at different lighting sections in different parts. It's just ideal for that area. And we can, we can limit the number of people in and out there.
Who's gonna police the distancing? That's probably what we're, probably what I think.
That's, that's gonna be hard, that's gonna be hard for trying to do. Because soon as you say, hey, you need to separate, you go down a line, you know, two or three people, and then you have to come right back here and say, you need to separate again. You know, so.
That's the problem, I think.
That is the problem.
Would you consider talking to the Capitol Church about using their parking lot to do Trump, the Trumpertree?
Yeah, I mean, we're open for any idea for them, so. But it's like Cuban, the same.
People that are about to do the Cuban song, yeah. That, that's another vital place. Because it's something, you gotta cover everything on most of it.
So, you know, let's, let's go ahead for table.
I think that the next motion, we table this until they have an opportunity to come back and give us some of their digital information at the next council meeting.
Next, or the first one is September?
Uh, the first one is September.
First of September.
Yeah.
Do I have a second on that?
I think that's a later date.
Later day week.
Oh, it is.
Will we can be on Tuesday or the following Monday? To be honest with you, it'll probably be sometime that week because we're gonna, we're gonna have a series of special meetings to get all our public hearings and discussions, all patchings and everything. Most of them is September in place, so.
I'll make sure, just tell them I need something, but first week is September.
Okay.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Well, all in favor? We got the first and the second, okay. Okay, the next item we're gonna table. We just, we're not ready to, do any of you say what it is?
Yes, the order, calling motions, we need a motion to table.
Okay. So City Council may discuss and consider passing an order to call city officers' election for November 3rd, 2020, for the unexpired place for single-member District 1, single-member District 3, and single-member District 4.
And just for your, just to take, you heard the talk about the order. I didn't see too many, ensure we got the order in the proper language and everything, so that we got perfection calling the proper order. And so we're just having to tweak it and get the order written in the right way, so there's no question about which ones are running where. So that's all it is. And we're looking at a special meeting next Monday, so we'll have to present it there.
So do I have a motion to table this?
Aye.
Okay, a second? All in favor? Thank you. City Council may discuss and consider approval of a proposed contract services with Infotech, HIBs, and Todd for temporary contract operations for water and wastewater systems.
Mayor, can you have any questions regarding this agreement? Can bring in the contract services of Randy Everett?
Oh, my only question about this is why are we having to go through HIBs and Todd to do this?
Well, because technically, he is working for them right now. And so the clean way and the proper way to do it to make sure that we, everything's clean and above board and not to jeopardize its retirement is to contract it out as contract labor. It's the same with the gentleman that we just got out of contract with. He actually does work full-time for another engineering firm that's just watching one facility. This gentleman is able to watch both facilities for us, and he's actually here in the city.
Yeah, well, I agree with Ren. That's, that's 29 years experience right here in Harlem City. And he knows what he's doing at the water plant. But I just want to follow, going through HIBs and Todd.
It's, it's the same thing. Yes, sure.
And at the same time, we're doing this at, do I see, 45 Wall Town?
Yes, sure.
And at the same time, if we approve this, will we also have the opportunity to use HIBs and Todd on other engineering projects we might have? Or is this just for?
No, no, this is, this, this agreement is just for this. We already, HIBs and Todd is our engineer of history, and so that's professional service, and we don't have, have those agreements.
Just want to clarify, so everybody knew.
Yes.
Now, I make a motion that we approve this contract with HIBs and Todd for Randy to be the owner of the water plant.
And waste water.
Waste and waste.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next item, City Council may discuss and consider a position for our finance director.
As you, Mayor, Council, coming into the city of Ballenger for four whole weeks now and crunching the numbers with Bonita and seeing everything that's going on, and the lack of some documents that really for best practice purpose are not required, but best practices like capers and some other things like that, it has become increasingly obvious that we need to be in, have a finance director of finance onboard to crunch all the numbers and go through the, to work the budgets and make sure that everything's going the right way, financial APOs, so on and so forth. And I've got several different applications in my office. People have been applying for different types of accounting positions with the city. And I located a gentleman that already lives in Rosemont County and has a significant amount of experience in finance, budget analysis, budget forecasting, the things that we need. And I would like to go ahead and bring him onboard.
And we hardly found money in the budgets to be able to pay him?
Yes, sir.
What, I just, my only indication, what experiences has he had in finances?
He's CEO, CFO, for multiple different organizations. He started his college education as an engineer when his father fell ill, and so he went back home and then went back to school in business management and administration. And his forte is in government accounting and business finance.
Chad, do you have a question?
Yes. Where is the money coming from budget to pay for this position?
There are some other positions that we have eliminated and that have not been in place that we're using those funds.
Thank you.
Yeah, 18 people, I mean.
And that's, uh, well, we, and honestly, Chad, we're past the comment question section. If you have questions, I'd order you to hurry, just go ahead and come up in the end, we'll talk about that stuff, so.
But that's all I was curious to know. And the state of Texas law allows me to address any item at the time.
I'm gonna get into the page. I'd like to have conversations one-on-one so that I can show you what I'm doing. I'm not trying to.
You've answered the question, that's all I was curious about.
Any other questions from the council?
Do we have anybody else that is being considered?
I looked and the thing of it is, is John already lives here. And once I announce his name, a lot of people in the community are already gonna know who he is and know his family. And so there's no need of anybody living in from anywhere. And so it's, it's, he'll be a good fit. He's somebody that we really know, he's very strong. And the thing of it is, I've known him for a few years and I trust him.
Has the council interviewed with him?
Council doesn't interview, they just, they vote on my recommendation.
I'll make a motion that we approve the hiring of the finance director.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. City Council may discuss an award bid for the purchase of city property located at 1201 North 8th Street. Legal description, part of Lot 4, all of Lot 5, Lot 12, and a binding addition.
Mayor, Council, in your package, I think you should find the documents that were submitted by the city's realtor. It has been offered on real estate on 8th Street in the amount of, Rick, you remember what that was? $1,500? There's been some discussions and debate as to the, do we, do we accept the $1,500 and get the real estate back on the tax roll? Or do we counter? Would they, would we counter and see what the, what results, maybe? It's the council's letter.
Well, it's probably saying that the analysis of the property was that they had $45,000, $700, or $45,000? And.
Why don't we have the analysis in this?
Of the $1,500 that's been offered by time all the legal crews and taxes and stuff, and they were solid, or wind up at $350, $60, or whatever, what, the land would be back on the tax.
Is that a hassle?
It's given to sellers.
It's where my house, it's on, it's on Main Street. And that's called a hassle.
Oh, okay.
This is your meant to seller, so you'll be met with a.
I'm sorry, friend.
No, go ahead.
Oh, I see what you're talking about. It's still placed.
I just wanted everybody, I think, if I would read them. I'm not a legal lawyer, I just want everybody to know what it was.
Well, on this, where it says improvements, and it doesn't have an agreement on it any longer, does it? Did any tear down?
Have a garage and a.
It does have a garage.
It's got two buildings.
And Parker Rock is.
One thing, man, I don't know if we put this up with this, because it's just.
It was submitted through the city's book.
Well, personally, I would not have the title insurance on these. I would have them put that there.
I, I.
For future issues, or it's safe if they're on the top of zones. This is, they kind of have, like, uh, I don't know.
I agree with that.
I do.
Under that circumstance, I would make a motion if we accept the bid, just be putting the property, providing bed rate at the time.
Well, yeah, that's, provide bed rate at the time.
That provides bed rate at the time.
Say it.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
And I'll make a clarification to this, yes.
Okay, that she went out to, I guess.
Modify.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for being patient on that. Okay, City Council will conduct a budget workshop for 2021 fiscal year budget.
Budget workshop is kind of a mislead and statement. It's just gonna be very, it's very short, very informal.
very short, very informal. You should, Council, you should have a spreadsheet form of the various funds and accounts. What we would like for you to do is, this is an opportunity to detect this with you and review the information. Steph has been working diligently on where to cut, how to cut, and how to better, make better use of the taxpayers' funds. As of right now, all we have is the certified values of taxable properties within the city of Ballenger. We have not yet received our rates. There has been a continuous problem with software providers and how the formulas were put out by the Comptroller's Office. Ms. Burgess, Mrs. Burgess has been working diligently and pointing out those issues I've sat down with her on two different occasions now, and she, I must say, I'm impressed with her knowledge and skill set, she is finding and picking apart their, their missteps. And so it's requiring the software provider to go back and relook at things and refigure the formulas and trying to get us our, our various rates. So what I would like to have happen is that if you would take these and go over them, scrutinize them, mark them up, have any comments, questions, or concerns, please bring them to me. We will have a special call meeting, is what I'm pushing for, on August 10th, at which time we will be able to go over the, the various budget items, and hopefully be able to present you with a proposed budget, have a public hearing, and adopt the proposed budget at that time. However, if we need to table the adoption of that, we can do so for another meeting.
You saying on 10?
Yes, sir. Five thirty. That's going to be a busy day, I know, this is the first day for school residents, and that'll be Tucker's first day at school if you're in, that'll be, so we'll get everybody grounded back and back here by five, they're going to be.
Do you have any other outstanding items that you've seen? If I don't.
Well, it's required, we've gone over this and over this and over this and over this, and fortunately, the added alarm collection rates have been very good. Sales tax revenues have been consistently above from the same points of previous year. January this year was probably the lowest rate, I thought, I don't have it right in front of me, about a six percent above, I guess seven percent above from same year last year, same date last year. July's, the last one we received was right at 30% above, and we're set for our next allotment on August 12th, and so that, that falls, that'll be June's payment, and so historically speaking, that, every three months, we've, we've seen a good return on our sales tax allocation. So I'm hopeful, if we can go ahead and continue to make the numbers work right, and we'll be in a, in a safe place and not, I'm, I'm trying to do everything we can to avoid using that nasty tax increase for the, nobody wants to do that. So that's, we're striving diligently to keep from having a raised rate.
What you have, all that, you get a good, that's the proposal?
Again.
That's what we changed. That's what's changed, okay. Well, basically, you change, it is, what, where your.
Yes, sir. That's what we put in. Yes, sir. I said, there'll be some, these numbers are probably going to change, but not probably. I know they're going to change between now and then. It's still very fluid. The directors or those that are from the various departments have been asked to go back at least twice now, sharpen their pencils, and they've done really well, they can easily work with, and so we'll, we'll keep striving to do that.
And also, I guess, if I'm not, you asked the woman of various crews to give you some idea of what they think they might need to complete their jobs, which is something that's not happened before, and I think it's a good thing because it has them involved with the city and as to what needs to happen, what they know about, and they can relate to us what's happening. And if they're involved in the city, then they're going to feel good about pulling out doing their job, and I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. That's, that's one of the things that when we talked about in my interviews, is I try to find different ways to provide volume and staff. But, Mayor, Council, that's all I have for right now, on the budget stuff, we'll, we'll begin my meeting, we'll pick this up again.
We're all needed emotions here, correct? We're just, we're going to pick it back up on Monday through to 5:30. Okay. All right. And that concludes everything on the agenda, so do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Sure.
Ken, Ken got the first. Do I have a second for anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, meeting is adjourned, thank you for showing up.